Monday, September 22nd, we are in the boardroom of the administration building at 12121 West North Avenue. And we will begin with a moment of silent reflection, please. Thank you. Mrs. Galanti, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Bodden?
Here.
Mrs. Casey?
Here.
Mrs. Fee?
Here.
Mr. Croner?
Here.
Mr. Meyer?
Here.
Mrs. Mielefeld?
Here.
Mrs. Randall?
Here. Thank you. Next portion of our agenda is public comment on non-agenda items. And members of the Wauwatosa School Board value the input of students, parents, staff members, and community members. The Board's regularly scheduled meetings provide an opportunity for opinions and concerns to be expressed publicly. The Board values all comments and will respectfully consider this input in decision-making. The Board requests that individuals limit their comment on each item to three minutes. Following any comment, an individual Board member may respond on the issue raised, however, it is not the intent of the public comment portion of the agenda for the Board to enter into a debate with a member or members of the community. Because non-agenda items are not publicly posted in advance, no action will be taken on public comment regarding non-agenda items this evening. Is there anyone here who would like to comment on a non-agenda item for tonight? Okay, seeing none, thank you. We will begin, as we have done the previous two meetings, we have invited members of our staff to present and show some of the exciting things that are going on in their buildings. And tonight, we are having a presentation. Kelly Roberts from East Academic Resource Center, and along with two student link leaders, are going to speak about TOSA's East Link Crew Program. Link Crew is an internationally recognized program which helps freshman students successfully transition from middle school to high school with the assistance of trained upperclassmen. They will present the history, goals, and merits of the program, as well as upcoming activities. So is it Mrs. Roberts or Mr. Hughes?
It's all of us.
Okay.
Mine is kids.
Thank you.
It's my pleasure to welcome up our three Link Crew advisors, Kelly Roberts, Cindy Carter, and Erin Gould. They are the adults that are responsible for the Link Crew work that has gone on for the past couple of years. So they're going to talk a little bit about the group, what they have done this year, and also what the upcoming activities are. I am very fortunate, East High School is fortunate, that it is a teacher-adviser-led initiative with a lot of student input. So I'm able to step back every year and know that registration and orientation is going to be taken care of very, very well, and that we're going to work to act in our freshmen through the work of these three, as well as our 75 or so student volunteers.
Okay.
So I'll turn it over to the people who do the real work.
Thank you.
We asked some of the students to come, but Curtains, the new East musical, also started rehearsals this week, and almost all of our kids are doing both, so they were really overstressed this week.
Sure, that's fine.
So here's our opening day. Do you want to go too far? How do I go back?
Just the left arrow.
There you go. Okay, sorry. The goal of the program is to link freshmen with successful upperclassmen and create a sense of comfort for incoming students, and really eventually to change the attitudes of upperclassmen toward the freshmen, and to just build a better culture throughout the school. Something when we go around in May and talk to the upperclassmen about who we would like to be a link leader, one line that we always say to them is, "We want every freshman to walk in on that first day of school and to look at the link leaders in their matching shirts and see a link leader that looks like them, or that they can relate to." And that really, I think our juniors and seniors really took that to heart, and we got quite a cross-section of kids, from kind of all walks of life, and even kids that surprised us, like quiet kids that weren't involved in a million activities, said, "That might be something good for me." And so we got a nice cross-section. Anything? No? Okay. The timeline for us, we, the three of us went to a training, the May before last, and received the adult training. It was a very intense training, wouldn't you say?
I lost a toenail.
It was like tag games, where you were up and you were moving, and it was having to look into yourself and your own philosophies. And I mean, in 25 years of teaching, this was really one of the best trainings I've gone to. It was having to get ready to almost perform in front of a group, and you know, do you have all the steps memorized, and do you have all these things memorized? The entire orientation, the entire program is, nothing is accidental. They've kind of thought everything out. It's very purposeful. Everything you do with the kids is very purposeful. We had many like aha moments, and then it's kind of neat, because you interact with the kids, and you run through these silly games, and then all of a sudden you reach this point where it's like, "Oh, that's why we're doing this." So we came back, and right away that May, we signed up for our first group of leaders, and then in August, we trained them, and had one year last year. This is our second year now. And this year, we're working very hard to make things, make the program more year-long, instead of just the opening ceremony.
Last year, we called it Link Crew Light, they called it.
Yeah.
And then we went and got trained a second time in Illinois, and they helped us figure out how to implement the social aspect for a whole year-long impact of the freshmen, instead of just that orientation piece.
You want to talk about some of the activities?
Sure. Again, this August, we trained our, we have 90 this year? We have 90 leaders this year. So we trained them again this past August, on two and a half days of training. And then we did our opening day. We did a freshman dance. We have a tailgate party coming up this Thursday for the freshman game, so we're pretty excited about that. In October, looking at, oh, that's our field trip. Okay. We're doing a training with the juniors in October, and then we're going to take the seniors then in November for another training, too, to do some additional training for the students. We're going to do a white elephant social event with them, and then in January, we're going to do a cocoa and cramb to help the students study for some finals. One thing that we're doing, too, through advisory, we've been sending the leaders to the freshman advisories, and so they can get to know their link leaders a little bit more.
Last week, they went, and the kids, the freshmen and sophomores set up goals for the year, for like a four-week goal and a six-week goal. And it was kind of fun, because the link leaders came and gave them advice, and like one link leader, the kids were being silly, and he gave them advice that he didn't take his freshman year seriously. The teacher said it was great, because I was standing there saying, "You have to do this." And then this boy stepped in front of them and said, "This is so important." And everybody like, listened to everything he had to say.
So then in March, we're looking at a game movie night, and then in May, we'll start to train the leaders for the next school year. And then in June, we're looking at doing some kind of activity again as well. We've even talked about possibly maybe doing something with the web leaders from Longfellow, with the link leaders at the end of the year.
Because last year, our kids did go and help with Acal one night, just because the gal who was running Acal, the rec night at Longfellow, was short-staffed, and so we went and helped, and they really enjoyed it. Let's see if it opens.
The Facebook page was created by one of our students on his own. He started the Facebook page and updating what we're doing, and we can send announcements that way.
So we have been sending announcements. We just thought it was kind of neat that the kids actually took it upon themselves to create this. And so we invited all the kids, and then they invited us. So here's our opening day. So opening day had always been sort of a fun activity, just the freshmen come in the morning. But the way we changed it is the teachers all line up in matching t-shirts in the hallway, and the kids are all milling around the learning center, and then eventually, a couple of link leaders come out and say, "All right, everybody, it's time to come in." And all the teachers line up and high-five the kids, and the kids come in all excited. And then in the gym, our link leaders are also lined up high-fiving. Eventually, they all get into the bleachers where Erin leads the activities.
To give each other back rubs, to wake up a little bit, get going, do a whole lot of different team-building, get over those first nerves. We just started high school type activities, and it's a really, it's a fun morning.
So I just have a few more pictures. Here, they're taking a break and listening. Eventually, then, the kids are each assigned, it's two leaders per, like 12 kids, 10 kids? And they go into the classroom, and they do more activities in team-building and that kind of things with them, goal-setting for the year. They also give them a tour. We also have Colleen Dartis, our Spanish teacher, comes in that day also, and takes all of the new upperclassmen around. So they're not with the freshmen for the day, but they do get somebody who takes them for a shorter amount of time, for like a two-hour span, and walks them through how to use the cafeteria, and the library, and things like that. This year, she had quite the challenge. She had a lot of English as a second language kids. There they are. And?
Then we bring everybody back after lunch. The rest of the school comes in, and we hold a huge back-to, welcome-back assembly, and our Link Crew leaves it with a little bit of dance and school spirit. They do some chants. You can see the Wauwatosa East flag there is waving, and we do a little raider's bump, welcome back, so they've worked with that, too. So it's a really exciting day.
And we're excited now that we have this advisory as well, because the kids, I think by second semester, we'll be able to have them lead lessons and do some neat activities. And that's it.
Is that guy wearing a beanie?
No, it's the light on his head.
I didn't know if that was like a punishment, or?
No.
Okay.
Just sorry.
Sorry. Board members, any questions or comments? Kristy. Mrs. Casey.
Thank you guys for the presentation. I had no idea that this was going on in the district, and this is so great. And thank you, guys, for taking the leadership on this and doing it, because our kids wouldn't have this opportunity if it weren't for the three of you. So thank you so, so much. I was thinking, you know, when you first gave your presentation, how like important that is for the freshmen, but then as you talked more, the leadership and the skills is giving the link leaders, I mean, really, really, it's even like, almost becomes more important than what it gives for the freshmen, you know? I remember when I was in high school, I was in a peer counseling group, and I swear, to this day, I'm still drawing from that experience. And so our kids are just really, really lucky, and I love the idea that you guys are thinking, like, taking it down to the web leaders at the middle school. I mean, just great job. Thank you so much.
Anyone else? I just have one question. What about new students, not freshmen, but maybe older? Can they somehow participate in this, or is that?
Yeah. I'm sorry. That would be, we have them come in about an hour later, because this whole thing is geared toward like the class of 20, you know, whatever.
Right, right.
2018 this year, yeah. And so we have them come in about an hour later, and Colleen Dartis kind of takes them around and sits with them, and they go through like how the cafeteria works, and accessing guidance, and checking out, and things like that. So we have them come in early. I called each one at home and said, "Coming in."
Okay. Well, thank you. My kids are all way, way past high school, but I can see where this is greatly appreciated. So, and I agree with Mrs. Casey, the experience for the leaders is, I'm sure, equally important as it is for the new freshmen. Thank you for coming. I'm glad you guys weren't in the play. What is it? Curtains?
Curtains.
Oh, okay.
It's going to be fabulous.
Yeah. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
It's a murder.
Mystery musical.
Okay, we can then move on to the approval of the consent agenda. Are there any items on the consent agenda which Board members would like to remove for a separate discussion and action? Okay. Seeing none, may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Okay, then we can vote. Pardon me?
Public comment.
Thank you. Is there any public comment on the consent agenda? Okay, seeing none, please call the roll.
Mr. Bodden?
Yes.
Mrs. Casey?
Yes.
Mrs. Fee?
Yes.
Mr. Croner?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Mielefeld?
Yes.
Mrs. Randall?
Yes. Thank you. Okay, our first action item, Mrs. Fee, please.
Certainly. It is recommended that the School Board approve the revisions to Policy 2341, Overnight Field Trips, as presented at the September 8th Board Meeting, and I so move.
Second. Okay, thank you. And these are the revisions that we received at the last meeting. Since that time, any Board members have any questions or comments on that?
I just have a question.
Yes.
Has, in light of what we are going through in our world situation regarding the heightened awareness of terrorism, et cetera, are we more diligent, concerned about overseas trips? Are we looking at it differently than maybe we would have?
I think the original policy came out as a result of the tough times that we faced a number of years ago, 9/11, and so the policy, the spirit of the policy hasn't changed, just the information that we need. So I would say the diligence is, it's not any more diligent, but it, I think it is set up to deal with those situations in the first place.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Mrs. Mielefeld?
I just wanted to comment on one of the additions, D, that roster. I think that was an exceptionally good addition, especially when you're, you don't want to be looking through a lot of paperwork when you're, you know, hosting a field trip, and, you know, having that roster and that information handy, I think is a very good addition to the policy.
Okay. Anyone else? And I guess I would like to note that Mrs. Galanti took the initiative to go through this and make it more user-friendly and more effective, and we appreciate the time that you took to do that, so. Is there any community comment on this item? Okay, seeing none, may we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Bodden?
Yes.
Mrs. Casey?
Yes.
Mrs. Fee?
Yes.
Mr. Croner?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Mielefeld?
Yes.
Mrs. Randall?
Yes. Okay, thank you. Moving on to reports, Dr. Erdl, we have the Education Foundation of Wauwatosa here.
Yes, tonight, we have Mary Phillips and a number of other people with EFW, and they're here to share some information with us.
I'm Mary Phillips, the president of the EFW, and joining me tonight are Kristen Olton, the vice president, Susan Allen, a board member, Kristen Florrell, our administrative director, and also in attendance, and a member of the FWA Board, is Laura Wayne Scott. In 2015, the EFW is going to celebrate our silver anniversary, 25 years serving Wauwatosa. When you hear about the EFW, most people immediately think, "Oh, yeah, the FWA, that's the Walk Run." While the Walk Run is probably the most visible event that the FWA has, it by no means is what the FWA is about. We're so much more than that. Since 1990, the EFW has funded over $495,000 in grants. Grants that are teacher-driven and support and strengthen the work they do in the classroom to enhance the educational experience for their students. Teachers and grant recipients like Linda Landis recognize the importance of the FWA to Wauwatosa students. Linda says, "FWA is beneficial to students because it can open up a whole new world of learning for them." For the 2014-2015 school year alone, the FWA will award $36,620 to implement 10 grants, which will benefit over 1,700 students. This year's grants cover a wide scope of initiatives, including literacy, physical fitness, writing, music, research, critical thinking, positive behavior, and the connection between home and school. You may have noticed the colorful folders that we've given to you tonight. Those folders were created for this second year for distribution to elementary school students. So 3,600 were distributed to be used either as a daily folder for homework, or a weekly take-home folder for communication between home and school. And in the folder is additional information on each of the grants for this year.
Grants are awarded in the spring, but aren't implemented until the fall, with the start of the new school year. On September 10th and 11th, members of the EFW Board surprised grant recipients at their schools to congratulate them on their grants. It's also the perfect way to let students know that there will be an excellent learning opportunity for them as well. While those students are the first to reap the benefits, the wonderful thing about EFW grants is that they are the gift that keeps on giving. Even though funds are awarded for a single school year, the materials are used far longer than one year. So at some point in every Wauwatosa public school student's education, they will be impacted by the EFW. Angie Kalenko, grant recipient and reading specialist from Madison Elementary, touches on the importance of the funds the FWA raises. The FWA intentionally and fairly supports the learning of all students in the district through the generous donations it contributes annually. The FWA has five ways it raises funds each year. The first is early-release bowling at the AMF Bolero every Wednesday from September through May. $4 per person for shoe rental and unlimited bowling from 2:30 to 4:00, and the FWA receives $2 per bowler. Each fall, we have an annual campaign, which is a direct mail campaign to the community. On December 6th, we will have our second Barnes and Noble Book Fair at Mayfair Mall. In addition to performances by students and readings by teachers, we will have free gift wrapping with a portion of sales given to the FWA. On Saturday, February 7th, we will have our third black-and-white catered affair at the Crown Plaza, with silent and live auctions, raffles, live music and dancing. This event also gives us the opportunity to recognize the grant recipients for that year. Finally, and most famously, the Walk Run, which will be held on May 2nd at the Milwaukee County Zoo, a true family and community event which brings everyone together in support of education in Wauwatosa. Beyond the Walk Run, the Education Foundation of Wauwatosa has played an integral role in enhancing education for Wauwatosa students for almost 25 years. The FWA is important to students, teachers, the school district, and the community. We'd like to thank the School Board for this opportunity to speak to you this evening, and for your continued support of the FWA.
Board members, questions or comments? Mrs. Mielefeld?
Thank you. I wanted to let you know that I saw your articles in the paper this past week, and it talked about how you went out and visited the schools. I think that's wonderful, and really an extra and added benefit to you being in the buildings and talking directly with the staff about the money raised and how you're helping kids. So thank you very much. We could not do this without you, and I think I've attended almost every event the FWA has had in my tenure as a Board member, as many as I certainly can, and thank you again.
Anyone else?
I guess I would also just like to thank you and all the Board members over the years. I know that you spend a lot of time, people do really look at the Walk Run and think that that's all there is, but I know that this is a year-round job for all of you, and I thank you very much. I have seen a lot of these programs at work in the classrooms, and they are very beneficial to the students. So I just wanted to join Mrs. Mielefeld in giving you our thanks for all the work you do for our students.
Thank you. Thanks. Anyone else? Did you have something to add?
I guess it sounds very similar, but from a different lens, I guess, in looking at what the FWA brings, it's a unique relationship between the district and the FWA, and I think it's been really encouraging to see the work that these people put in. It's a lot of hours, I know they spend a lot of time in the Fisher Building, and I know a lot outside, but the thought process that goes into making FWA better and for one sole purpose, to raise money to give to the school district. And I think it's awesome, and the work you put in and what you've done with the FWA is tremendous, so thanks.
Yeah, and I'd like to add, too, I have actually seen the growth. Back when my kids were in school, it was pretty much the run. That's how it started out. And so this is like major, major growth with all the different things that you've undertaken. I had a question about the grants. Do you set aside a certain amount and then take the applications, or do you have to turn people down every year? Are you able to fund everything, every request you get? How has that been working?
We have a grant formula, and it's based on the money that we've raised during the year. And so we know going into the grant process how much money we have to give. And then we receive the grant applications, and we vote on them as a board, and fund the grants, as many of them as we can, until we can no longer fund them. So grants that maybe didn't rate as high, might not get funded. We also do some partials, so if we think that there's some areas where they can maybe get help from their building, or their PTAs, or we don't fund staff development, so if that's a component of the grant, we might not give the money for that. So, and it just kind of varies from year to year. Usually, the amount we give is pretty much the same, it just depends on how many grant requests that we get.
Okay, so you have good participation, then, as far as people applying for those grants?
Yes, for the most part, yes.
Yeah, well, thank you. Thank you very much for all you do, and for being here tonight. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have one more report before we take comment on that. The Technology and Teaching and Learning Department report. As we are incorporating more and more technology on a regular basis with student learning, I believe it was Mr. Croner that was interested in hearing a little bit more about how those two come together, you know, when we get a lot of Chromebooks and we start using those. So he and, I believe, Mrs. Ehrenberger are going to speak, Mr. Price? Okay. Is going to speak about?
Yep.
That, thank you.
Okay. Let me go to full screen. Hello? Okay, so I'm going to go through a Technology Services update. We're going to cover a lot of areas here, but I've broken it out into three. First being general technology, so I'm just going to talk tech stuff, right, and let you know what we've done over the past year or so. The second section is going to be on community engagement, and then the third section is going to be on the relationship between teaching and learning and the Technology Services Department. Okay, first, general technology. So where are we right now? We're pretty much in a wireless world. Let me click on here and give you some information. So over the past three years, we've been working on moving to a mobile environment. Just some interesting facts, we have about 120 times more data going out to the internet than we do the circles network internally. 95% of what students do, 95% of what we do as professionals, is over the internet. Wireless is everywhere. We've got 1,900 private networks that we picked up just around our district buildings. We've got BYOD, 70% of secondary students bringing in their own devices, et cetera, et cetera. Devices we have on the network, what we're seeing right now, we have about just under 3,900 Chromebooks, 610 faculty laptops, just under 1,000, we've got licensing through 1,020, but we've got just under 1,000 virtual desktops active, plus a smattering of other devices, BYOD, smartphones, media players, iPads, et cetera. You'll notice there's one thing that is missing from that list, and that is actual traditional computers, and I'll touch on that a bit later. Let me just click that. Okay. We have 95% wireless connectivity coverage in all of TOSA buildings now, that 5% being things like bathrooms, basements. five percent being things like bathrooms, basements, et cetera, where there's no real educational need. Six-hundred-and-sixty-seven access points installed. One-hundred percent of schools offer BYOD wireless access to the public now, I'll touch on that in a bit as well. And on a daily basis, on average, we have over three thousand devices connected to our wireless network at any one time during the day. We use a number of online services, the primary ones being what's shown up here on the board, Blackboard, our website, Google Apps, and a few others, especially Khan Academy. We've increased the amount of bandwidth that we've got over the years, and I'll bring that up in a chart here. If you look very closely, you can see a little tiny orange-yellow line there for nineteen-ninety-one. In two thousand eight, we went from ten meg prior to hundred meg, and then two thousand twelve, thirteen, fourteen, we've gone two hundred, four hundred, and one thousand megabits per second for our internet connection. It's used to its full capacity. The DPI recommendations are actually one thousand meg per one thousand students, but that's just a general number that's thrown out. We police our connection rather well, and we control the traffic so that people can get to what they need to, and we restrict the flow on some of the non-necessary materials. So we're not at that point yet. However, with that being said, I predict that that will increase over time. We recently added thirteen-hundred Acer C seven-twenty Chromebooks to our inventory, bringing the Chromebook count up to just under thirty-nine-hundred, three thousand eight hundred and sixty-five. Those Chromebooks were initially introduced to support digital resources, but they are being dual-purpose and used for a variety of other tasks. The three thousand eight hundred and sixty-five that I mentioned there are spread across the entire district, so it's not enough for one for every high school student or one for every middle school student, because the elementary schools use them to quite a large degree as well. However, with that being said, I predict that if digital resources continue to convert to, oh, sorry, if curricular resources continue to convert to a digital format, and if we continue or need to continue providing devices to support that, eventually we'll be at the point where we're at a one-to-one model. With just over seven thousand students in the district, you can see that it's only gonna take one or two or maybe three more content areas to convert to digital resources, and for the devices to be provided to support those, that we will be at that point. We've never historically been a district that has bought into one-to-one, but more a district that's just made sure that the students have the devices available to them when needed, but eventually you get to a point where it's a one-to-one model, and it's more expensive to provide a cart to every classroom than it is to give one to every student. So that could potentially happen over the next couple of years. That is a point of conversation that we're having with Business Services and Teaching and Learning Department at this point in time, just to make sure that, you know, if in two or three years' time we're at that point, we can financially sustain that model moving forward, because doing that on a one-off purchase, we'll just find ourselves in a hole two or three years down the drain. One important point to note, as I mentioned before on that list, we haven't purchased traditional PCs for over three years now, with the exception of some very unique areas like Project Lead the Way or video editing labs. We're using Chromebooks and virtual desktops wherever else. And part of that is because it's a financial boon for us. For the cost of one computer, we can buy two-point-two Chromebooks, so it makes it more viable to use web-based utilities and to use Chromebooks as opposed to providing desktops or laptops to students. Okay, however, with that migration to ninety-five percent of our business being done on the web and so many mobile devices, et cetera, in-house, we're a significantly different environment now compared to what we were, say, three or four years ago. Three or four years ago, we could create accounts for students on our network, and it was one login that they used, and they could just get everything off of things that we had here inside the district. Now, we're a much more different environment where we're dealing with seven thousand students that have accounts, that they have accounts in multiple systems. And those multiple systems are not ones that we control, they're outside of the district, so we have to be extremely cautious on how we provision those accounts. We have to be extremely cautious in the information that we share, and we have to make sure that we share all that information with parents, get their approval, and so on and so forth. As a district, for those accounts, examples being Google Apps or Blackboard, we only share first name, last name, and email address, those email addresses being district-provisioned email addresses that are created by us. We never share personal email addresses at all. But that change in mentality and that change in structure has had a very significant impact on the Technology Services Department. Whereas we used to be able to create one account for a student at the start of the year, now we have a lot more flexibility that is demanded of us in account creation because we're doing it multiple times over multiple systems, and they're also tied into things like classes in our student information system. For example, the district website, a student can log into the website and get a list of their classes, but if they change classes, we don't have the ability for individuals to manually make those changes. So we've refined our processes. Basically, we have pretty comprehensive parental agreements that go out at the start of the year that are no longer opt-outs. We used to just say, okay, students can have accounts on our network, and if you don't agree, sign here. Now it's the reverse of that. We require parents to verify and confirm that we can create those accounts, we provide all the privacy agreements at those online sites, et cetera. And we've really refined our internal processes to do this as well. As you know, prior to working in the district, I was consultant, and one of the things I used to do was actually implement systems that would automate things like that. And I know they're cash counts for consultants, they're extremely complex and expensive projects to implement, and they're very, very sensitive as well. If one of those applications changes, it breaks the whole system, and then you've gotta get the consultant in to redo it. So internally, we restructured some of our roles and redefined what they do to accommodate all of this account management that has to occur. And we've got a mix of automated processes that we've developed ourselves, plus the human part of it where we have some resources internally that on a daily basis will kick those processes off and check and make sure that everything's aligned and things are where they should be and that people aren't getting exposed where they shouldn't be exposed. However, once we've done that, well, then we run into a problem because we didn't add staff. So that process has taken away some of what we can do in the field to support teachers. So we had to counteract that as well. By doing that, we introduced a new help desk. That actually went live today. The help desk, the new help desk increases the availability of techs so that they don't necessarily have to be face-to-face with people, it's increased the amount of self-service that teachers can undertake. It simplified the interface, and it's also, as an added bonus, given direct input into the direction of technology within the district. I'm gonna show you that just quickly here. This is our new help desk, it went live today, if you can see down at the bottom right. We actually have a chat window. So if any of the techs are online, maybe they're working on tickets for somebody else, teachers have availability to them via chat. We have a knowledge base in here that hopefully will develop into a pretty robust self-help tool, so if a teacher wants to find an answer to something quick, they can type in a search and come up with a whole bunch of solutions, tutorials, et cetera. The interface has been simplified, the solutions database, like I said, will grow, and then we also have a forums area in here that has things like feature requests. The feature requests are kinda nice because a person can, an employee can submit something and say, hey, yeah, I think this would be a good idea for technology in the district, this is available to all employees, and they can also rate it. Okay, so we see here that one person likes this idea, this is obviously just a sample, but the more likes, the closer we're gonna pay attention to it, right? And that gives, like I said, faculty and staff more direct input into the development of the district itself. Okay, moving on. So, all of that that's gone on and these huge changes over the last two to three years, about five or six years ago, we asked for some money for fiber and a complete overhaul on the internal networking infrastructure. I just wanna let you know that that's still holding strong, that investment is still going good. We have had bandwidth, obviously bandwidth and minor updates is needed, but the foundation's still solid. Migration to the internet and mobility forced upgrades to internet connectivity, so we had to make adjustments to make sure that we could accommodate in excess of ten gigabytes of traffic to the web. We have that, it was always built into the solution when we initially implemented it. We're starting to get closer to that now. Does it cost money? Yeah, I mean, we've gotta buy interfaces and things like that, but it doesn't require us to completely overhaul the system to get there. We've had security enhancements because of the traffic changes, and those security enhancements have actually afforded us the ability to modify our BYOD offerings, which I'm going to touch on shortly. Future, what do we see? An environment where students can conquer their current and future challenges free of the inherent limitations of time, location, and physical resources. Physical resources being textbooks and things like that. There is actually, to keep it brief, I'm not gonna take you to that, but we'll post this presentation later or tomorrow, and there is an infographic there that talks about what we talked about before. Next area, community engagement. Okay, so BYOD. We implemented wireless probably about eighteen months ago across the district, and at that point in time, we did bring in BYOD, and we allowed students to bring their devices in, but it was restricted. They had to be able to log into the network, they logged into the network with their accounts. Nobody else could use it, okay? Because of the security enhancements that we had, we can now open that up to all parents and students, so BYOD is now available to parents and the community that come in for baseball or basketball games, swimming tournaments. If they're waiting in the office to meet the building principal, whatever, it's open, it's available to the public. With a few caveats, it is limited to the school hours, and there are general restrictions on that. So because we allow students to access it, obviously we've got filtering on for offensive content, et cetera, and that does apply in the BYOD network. So any restrictions that apply to students also apply to parents or anybody else that wants to use it. District website, we launched and deployed that last March. The standards are set for teachers, and teachers are populating their class sites, so I'll just click on one here and bring it up, and as you can see, we have teachers that are now posting homework to their sites, forms for parents, et cetera, et cetera, creating their calendar events and so on. This is occurring across the district as a standard for all teachers, and we have been educating them in how to do that, and I will touch on that a bit later, too. However, we're still learning and adjusting to this new website to say to all of our teachers, you all have to do this now, you all have to post homework, et cetera. It's a huge change, and it's not that teachers are resistant to it, it's just that they've got a lot on their plates, right? And also from the technology side, we're also adjusting to it as well. This is the first year that we've gone through a full rotation, where students have moved to other schools, and we've had to redistribute codes and so on. So it's going well, but like I said, still a learning process, and it'll just continue to improve. Atomic learning. What I'm gonna do is actually quickly switch back out to our help desk. On the help desk, we have a number of, you know, tutorials, right? So if I was to click Google Docs, it'll come up with this list of links, and if I click one of the links, I just have to log in just quick, a video will start, okay?
You can upload PDFs to Google Docs.
Okay, so we're not gonna watch the video, that's... But suffice it to say that that video service is a partner that we have partnered with, or a video training company that we have partnered with, that has just a huge, I think something in the range of sixty-odd thousand videos available that cover not only the things that we're interested in for professional development of staff and students, but other things like Skype and Microsoft Office and pretty much most applications that you can think of. This is available to students, like, so right now, we're primarily using it for faculty professional development. As you can see here on this website, we posted a whole bunch of links on how to create Google Docs, et cetera, et cetera. We are in the process of rolling that out to students and making it available to them as well. Initially, we do have it deployed in our Blackboard Learn, our learning management system, where we have a string of links on how to use Blackboard Learn. So now when a student enters Blackboard Learn, maybe it's the first time, immediately there's a bunch of videos there for them to watch on how to use the discussion board, how to submit assignments, and so on. What is nice about this partner is that they have also granted availability to this tool to district parents. So in the very near future, we will be sending the link to the site and the credentials, the username and password, to all district families, and they will then have access to that site as well. I won't take you to it, I won't go through it, but suffice it to say, that's a nice bonus and a nice value add for us and for the community. Contact Us page, right now on the district website, let me just take you there so I can show you, we have, on the right-hand side, a contact button, and that contact button lists out a few names and extensions and email addresses, and down the bottom, we have a Contact Us form, which is great, and it's been used, and we've probably had a couple hundred requests go through this. But as we worked on our help desk, this site here, we realized that this is actually of significant value. This help desk is restricted to Wauwatosa employees, so other people cannot use it, but we created another instance that we have not implemented just yet, but we're going to open this similar sort of site up on the Contact Us page on the district website so that when the community comes to, when the community clicks that contact link, if people like, say, Laura, the community liaison officer, are available and online, she'll be able to chat with them straight away. Or instead of filling out a form, the community can submit tickets to ask their questions. There's also the potential for, in the forum section, discussion boards. So much like I have set up or we have set up for technology personnel to ask for feature requests, we're looking at this, we're not committing to it just yet, but we're looking at this for the potential to open up some forums to the public, so discussions can be held, questions may be posed to Dr. Odl that he can answer online and so on, moderated, of course. Okay. So, yeah, doing that, chat when available, self-service, potential for discussion boards. Okay, next area, teaching and learning. Primarily, we're gonna talk about professional development. With all these changes that have gone on, the need for professional development has always existed amongst the district and its faculty, but it's increased of late, and especially since we've implemented the website standards, et cetera. So to respond to that, we've really refocused and analyzed and looked at how we should provide professional development within the district. The result of that is varied. One of those is the implementation or the creation of a 1.0 FTE position of District Technology Teacher Leader. That's not actually filled by one person, it's filled by two right now that are doing it by a job share. And the role of District Technology Teacher Leader is to help teachers meet the standards, basically, that we've set. We have technology competency standards that are based off of things like ISTI, NEST, AASL, and also a homegrown set of standards that we're still developing. DTTLs are working with teachers to try to evaluate and see where they need to be to meet those standards and how we can get them there. We also have Educational Technology Coaches in each building, they're people that receive a stipend to assist in this process, okay? They're local to the building and deal locally with the people. And those two categories of employees, along with the... And those two categories of employees, along with the teaching and learning, I nearly said student learning, sorry, teaching and learning and Technology Services Department work as a group. So we have consistency on direction between the departments and those people. How do they all fit together? I've got a snappy little video here for you to watch.
When it comes to training teachers, there are three major obstacles that need to be Finding the time where they can be taught. Teachers' schedules are not conducive to spending a great deal of time during the workday in professional development. Next is location. Our faculty are spread over a large area. We do not have enough resources to personally deliver pro depe to each site on a regular, recurring basis. And finally, differentiation. This means accommodating the varying levels of comfort and familiarity with the challenges of limited time and location. We don't want to leave anyone behind, so we have to find a way to ensure that we are accommodating all learner levels. Sound familiar? So that presents a challenge. How do we get the learning to the learner that is restricted by time, location, and needs individual attention? Well, the first thing we did was limit the volume of training required. We adopted the mentality of feed the hungry, not the full. Our primary professional development efforts focus on the core set of applications that we offer as a district. Our website, Blackboard Learn, and Google Apps. Next, we post everything in the district's learning management system, Blackboard Learn. That way, faculty can take their time to learn the material at their own pace. It can be accessed online from anywhere at any time. We then provide centralized follow-up training, for example Tech Tuesdays, that are aligned with a Blackboard class for people that need a more group hands-on experience that training is still group-oriented in nature. It is conducted by a variety of sources. Our DTTLs, our LMSs, and the Technology Services Department. Finally, for the person that needs individualized attention, local ed tech coaches in each school deliver it. They are teachers that work in that building and know those people personally. This provides the one-on-one to wrap things up. We believe that this approach is the best we can take to providing our faculty with the training they need in a manner that accommodates everyone.
So with that model in place, where we create the courses in Blackboard Learn, we then follow up with more centralized training for people that want hands-on as a group, and then individual training at the building level with the ed tech coaches. We started implementing that model over summer, at the Summer Academy, and we did it with LMS fundamentals, Google, interactive whiteboards, and mobile devices. Along with that model, and obviously we're going to use that going forward as well, and we actually have another Google course coming up in the very near future, in the next couple of weeks, that one of the DTTLs and one of our library media specialists are jointly instructing. Along with that, though, we had to give faculty some incentive to do this. Not that they're not driven, but I was looking for other ways that we could add some value to it. So we've actually tied what are called digital badges to this training. Digital badges are achievements that they can earn, and they receive basically a digital recognition for it. I have a sample here. We have a sample account called Leonard Wiley, and if we go to that account or that public URL, we can see that Leonard Wiley has gone through the LMS basics course and the Google basics course. I can open that, and, oh, sorry, I can expand that and look at the criteria, the description, what they had to do to achieve that, and so on. When faculty attends this professional development training, they have choices. They can attend it, or they can attend it and undertake the assessments and prove proficiency. When they prove proficiency, we then issue them with a digital badge relative to that course. The digital badge is verified and certified by the district, so they can't create their own and give themselves 27 badges that they haven't really earned. And as mentioned, we do have assessments related to this, demonstration of proficiency being the first and foremost. So they're not just given out for participation either. Looking forward, there's a variety of ways that teachers can then use this. They can post it on their website, they can add it to their email link, they can start to advertise their own skill sets. They can also utilize this, moving forward for assessment purposes with their supervisors, and instead of bringing five volumes of paper to them to show them what they've done, they can give them a link to this site, and the principals can rest assured that, you know, they've actually earned these badges and earned these achievements. Okay. So teaching and learning and the relationship between technology services with regard to curriculum. Basically, teaching and learning determines the need. The Technology Services Department would not dictate the teaching and learning, what they need from a technology perspective with regards to the curriculum. We can suggest things, of course, but technology services support teaching and learning. And when I mean support, it doesn't mean just Ms. Zerrenberg is saying, okay, we've got to do this now. It also means proactive support, so coming forward with ideas and initiatives, being aware of what's going on, both in the student, sorry, Teaching and Learning Department and other initiatives in the district, and always being able to bring forward some value add and to see where we can cut corners, make things easier, make things more engaging, and so on. That, of course, requires regular and frequent communications and ensuring that we're on the same page, which we do. Some of the initiatives that are in place at the moment, this is just the end, this is not all of them, but a couple that I wanted to mention. Our DTTLs are currently working on developing student portfolios. That means, basically, that a student will be allocated a private and secured website for their own purposes when they first join the district, whether that's in kindergarten or third grade or eighth grade or 12th grade. That will then be available to the student to load up with records, artifacts of their educational career in the district, and when they leave the district, they'll be able to package that website up and take it with them. Washington EFW grant, I'm so glad the EFW is here, because I wanted to thank them greatly for funding this one. EFW grants are always great, and frequently, there are technology-related grants and initiatives involved there, but this one in particular has my attention. We all know about smart boards and interactive whiteboards, and we know what they are and how people like them in the class, but they're limited somewhat in their functionality because you can only bring one student up to the board at a time to use it, or they've got to line up and so on and so forth. And while they're great tools and they're engaging, again, they're somewhat limited when you look at what's available today. The grant that some teachers, actually all the fifth-grade teachers at Washington applied for, was for something that we've been looking at for quite a while now. It's actually cloud-based, Internet-based, interactive whiteboard software, which means, to put it in a nutshell, instead of having one child come to the board to interact with a smart board or an interactive whiteboard, they can have 30 or all their students in the class interact with that software in parallel, all at the same time. I personally believe that that technology has the potential to truly be transformative, and of course, we're watching that very closely and working with those teachers. The DTTLs are going to be involved with those, so at the end of the year, we can get some quantitative data to see how beneficial that is. If it does have the benefit that I suspect it will in those classrooms, well, then we have some directional decisions to make. So thank you again, EFW, because we would not have been able to have done that pilot without them. We've also expanded our LMS or Blackboard Learn for professional purposes, so outside of the instructional stuff, we also have an employee orientation portal now. The mentor-mentee program is using it for record-keeping purposes and logs and analysis and so on. And then the last one is benchmark reporting. Again, this is tied to Blackboard Learn, but it's an initiative we have going at this point in time with the Science Department, who will be implementing online testing by Blackboard Learn, but the difference being that instead of getting a grade for the test, they can grade against the benchmark itself. And not just against the individual benchmark, but then they can also grade against the benchmark and find out in granular detail whether the student is, if the student's having problems, whether it's with assignments or with tests or with the discussion forums and so on. So an initiative we've got underway, we'll be implementing that soon, working with it over the course of the next year, and again, this is one that I think is going to bring significant value and may change the way that we do classroom assessments in the future. I'll say may, I'm not going to say it will. It might not do what we want, but I think it will. So with that being said, again, I have another infographic there, I'm not going to bring it up, but, oh, actually, I will. This one's sort of fun. It's just really a history of TOSA-TAC and where things were in 1983 and where we were then, all the way down to 2014. So I don't know if anyone remembers the movie War Games with Matthew Broderick, when that computer nearly destroyed the world. Well, coincidentally, in the same year, we decided to move our financial records to an IBM System 36. So again, that'll be available online, you can go through that, and that one's just for a bit of fun. Any questions?
Mr. Meyer.
I just, I just want to say thank you, Mr. Price. It's always a pleasure to hear what you have to say, and our children's technology is in good hands.
Thank you.
And you would know.
He knows.
Mrs. Muehlfeld.
Thank you. That timeline that you flipped up there at the last second was really neat, because it shows us how far we've come in really a short period of time with the investments and significant investments, I would say, that we made as a district to help our kids, and you're leading that effort. I am really interested in that whiteboard technology that you're talking about. I think it could be transformative. And I'm curious about it, so I'll probably just do a little bit of research, you know, outside of the meeting, because traditionally, you would think about a student being able to present their own information while everybody listens, and it sounds like the interactive technology means that everyone is presenting at the same time?
Yeah, that's one option, that's one potential. There could be group collaborative work, where students have a number of devices and a group of five could present and do their own thing, and not just put it up on the screen, but send it to all the other devices in the classroom. And the teacher can do the same, she can, he or she can present like they would on the smart board, but then pass that interactive component down to the students and have them interact all at the same time, as opposed to traditionally one at a time coming up to the board and moving the box or whatever it is.
Well, that's neat. I mean, I just think that's neat, so I'm going to look into it and see, and just look into it myself. But then the other, I think, significant activity was consolidating the actual hardware and figuring out how to deploy the hardware, so every student had a better opportunity for using, you know, the computers and how they use the computer. So, you know, not every student had to have an actual desktop that ran with software. You know, now we're doing, we're using all kinds of devices and, you know, making this technology possible for every child. I'm taking note.
Anyone else? Mr. Croner? Sorry.
Thank you. I was aware of a lot that was going on in the district, but I wasn't aware of a lot of what you talked about, so that was a really informative presentation, and I think not just for me, but the transformation society with the computing and the cloud-based systems is so great, I think it's really important for the citizens to know that that's happening in the schools as well, but that it's happening in a very thoughtful and planned way. And so I think you read articles in the paper of other school districts that are going to the one-to-one model, and they just purchase, you know, 3,000 or 4,000 computers, and it's not clear what planning goes behind that. So I think the citizens here can be pretty confident that there's very careful planning going into it and that the electronics and computer-based learning that we're integrating is really being done in a very careful way, and we're putting so many resources into it, I think it's important to get that message out there. I have two questions, I think, and it's about students. You made the statement that I wrote down because of the interesting, feed the hungry, not the full. And I read an article about one study that suggested that bringing computers into a district actually expanded the learning gap, because some of the students didn't have experience using computers, and the students that were full, that knew how to use them, raced ahead, and the students that weren't very familiar with them didn't progress as much as they might have. So I guess my question is, as both a student learning and a computer question, when people, students come into the district, we have learning targets and standards for reading. Are we developing the same sorts of things for students as far as using technology that we're keeping an eye on students that come to the district, that they should be able to use certain types of technology at a certain level, and if they don't have experience at that at home or haven't gotten it, that they're going to be brought up to speed, you know, that we're actually measuring that sort of thing?
Yes, we do.
And are they out somewhere, are they written, like the standards for reading?
They're actually built into the scope and sequence for the classroom teachers, which is part of what the DTTLs are helping us do, is to ensure that that scope and sequence is then further propagated actually into the classroom. It used to be consolidated in the libraries, at which point, you know, the decision was made quite a number of years ago that, you know, a 40-minute lesson on how to safely search the web once a year is not sufficient, that those skills really need to be something that are present in the classroom and practiced and advocated on a regular basis. So some work was done a while ago to move that out to the classrooms, where appropriate, of course, and as mentioned, the DTTLs are helping us ensure that that change is occurring. So that actual reference to feed the hungry, not the full, was in reference to faculty professional development, that we were trimming down, not trying to teach them a million different things.
But it made me think of young students that are so hungry for learning. Some have access to this technology at home or just eating it up, and others don't have quite so much. My other one was about using, you know, moving to electronic textbooks and things. So when we used to buy textbooks, when we occasionally do, we bought one for every student, and they were actually given a textbook and they could take it home and use it. But when we're going to online textbooks, the students might have access to a computer to use that material in school, but they might not have access to that outside of school, where other students might. So do we monitor that sort of thing, that if there are outside assignments that require Internet or computer access, that we're trying to find out what students might not have access, so we can help make that happen?
Teachers are strongly educated that digital resources are not the only method that they had to provide, that they are to accommodate other means as well. So if a student needs a printed copy, whatever else, then they are to provide that. We do, though, have an initiative in place, a pilot this year with Madison, where we're actually going to be providing students that do not have that access at home with hotspots and Chromebooks that they could sign out and take home, and then not so much meet the need, but still participate at the same level that other students do. Moving forward, again, this is another one of those things that we'll look at closely, see how well it worked, what other offerings are out there, and how to optimize that financially, fiscally, as well. I know the Department of Education has a few programs in place, the Federal Department of Education has a few programs in place that maybe we could take advantage of, so it's something that's very much on the, it's there. It's there and upfront, and we're aware of it, and it's an issue that we're constantly addressing.
Good. Thank you. That was a very nice presentation. Thank you.
Mr. Button.
Yes, thank you for the depth and clarity of your presentation, it was very helpful. Couple questions. You mentioned one PC equals 2.2 Chromebooks, I believe that. What is the longevity of these Chromebooks?
We're expecting four years.
Four years. And who would be responsible if they dropped or they were And who would be responsible if they dropped, or they were lost, or stolen, that whole...
If it was in a one-to-one model?
Yes.
That's something will work out at a later date when we get to that point. I...
For instance, you mentioned that if the Chromebooks left the school or something, and they didn't come back, are, are we saying the families are responsible, the students are responsible?
That's not something that I would be willing to, to even say right now, because we're not at a one-to-one model. All of our devices stay in the district. That's one of the myriad of issues that we would have to address, should we get to that point. And most certainly, we would look at other districts and get best practices from them and find out what exactly was, was going on. But at this point in time, we're so busy that we're not at that point, so it's not something that we're, we're looking at right now.
Okay.
Jenny, we, just another comment, we had experience with it with the iPads, where we offered insurance, and a number of people took insurance, and so I think we need to keep that in our memory, memory banks if we get to that point again, because there were some challenges with the insurance piece and how that was all, all dealt with, too. So, it's, I mean, I think it's, I think it's, I think it's a big issue that would have to be addressed.
Well, for example, if a student loses a textbook, damages a textbook, they're liable they pay for, for whatever sum of money. So is there any, I mean, now that we've bought, purchased all these Chromebooks...
They don't leave the district right now.
Let's say there's, if, if there is an incident within the classroom, and some hobbles are damaged, is there...
At this point, no. We cover those costs if they are damaged within the classroom like anything else.
Well, if accidental, I, I mean, I'm sure if it was intentional, a vandal, vandal behavior, it would be dealt like it would with any other device at a school. If a kid vandalizes a trombone, same sort of thing.
The second, thank you, the second question I have is the, obviously, teachers have a lot on their plate, you, you mentioned it, and is there a systematic, I guess, you, you mentioned the, the process that teachers can go to access this. Are we being, I don't know if this is the right word, but diligent enough to make sure that all teachers go through a process, or have an opportunity to go through these different steps?
That's what we're doing right now. That's why we have the DTTLs, that's why we have our four technology layers that are, that are still somewhat under revision but being finalized, and they're working in the buildings in conjunction with the EdTech coaches, and assessing entire buildings and seeing where those people need to be, so that we can come up with a training plan to get them there.
So is there a time period in which we could look at all the staff in terms of...
This year.
This year.
Over the course of this year.
Thank you.
Mrs. Casey.
Thanks. Thanks for this report. I was just recently reading some information on technology initiatives that Arnie Duncan has kind of set forth, and it's, when I was reading the article, I was thinking about our district and how, you know, we're kind of ahead of, of the initiatives that he's employing now.
They follow our lead, yeah.
Yeah, I can see that. So I, I am proud of, proud of that, and I know you've been very instrumental in, in that far district, and I appreciate that. I wanted to comment, I'm super excited about the DTTLs working on student portfolios. I think those are super important tools that students can learn, and help some to become more accountable for their learning, and certainly, the relevance it provides to 21st century skills. My, my questions, though, for you were, and maybe Mrs. Ehrenberger also, so half at it, have you talked about maybe some badges for students as they accomplish some of these technology standards? And then also, how are we with classes or training on coding for, for students?
Okay, badges for students. Everybody that was involved over summer in courses that received badges were also given the information that, hey, this is something you can bring into your class as well, if you wanted. And the offer was put out that if they're interested to contact us, and we could, you know, then help them on an individual level. It's not something that people have rapidly jumped into right now, because they've got a lot of other things on their plate. But it's out there. I, I think I know of one or two teachers that do do it. In terms of technology proficiency, you know, you've got to be careful, too, because sometimes it can just get out of control.
Sure.
One teacher ends up giving out 20 badges to each student, and then the next teacher gives out 20, and you've got students that have got 500 badges, and they don't really mean anything, right? So that's why any badging initiatives, we're trying to, just bring them in right now and really talk to the teachers and see how they, how they would like to work that out. As far as coding, I, is that present?
Can you provide more clarification what you mean by coding?
Programming?
Yeah, kind of programming, and, you know, there's, there's a, it seems to be like a, a big push in technology education, and giving kids, you know, you know, just training in, you know, making a red circle go inside of a green box, and teaching them, you know, the coding skills and, and... Is that, that's, is that maybe universal design for learning, where, you know, which has a huge technology component to it? That sounds like, you know, maybe what...
No, I think it's specific computer programming, and at this point, we're, you know, we, we've had the courses, and they've kind of died off, but I, I would agree, there's, there's a rising, I wouldn't say there's a rising need in our district, but it's something we'll continue, continue to, to, to look at or start to look at again. I think it goes back to even when John Murgood donated a bunch of equipment, that was probably 15 years ago, and that program has since kind of faded, but there's, I know there's interest, and it's something to certainly explore.
I think that might have been something we talked about along with the math, the, the three years of math credit, when we had a computer science, maybe that's, you know, I'm just not connecting to the, the word coding, but where we were looking at adding some of that into our curriculum that could meet a math requirement in the future. I just came back from a conference and saw something on this, so I'll send it your way. It's, it's pretty, there's a pretty inspiring trailer, and, you know, even musical engineers and people like that are talking about the importance of coding and how it pertains to... And that is used in universal design for learning as well. Yeah, and I, you know, I think I do specifically remember it as we were talking about those coursework earlier.
Mr. Meyer.
Correct me, I'm sure you can, but it seems the more, the concept of coding for the young people these days, it's more how to configure your devices, or your, you know, the idea of raw coding, there's not much of that done.
Uh, not so much. Right, today, it's, it's more interfaces. I've actually, I, when I saw that video that Ms. Casey was talking about, I believe it comes from the Department of Ed.
Yeah, I think so.
And it's a push to, to get coding skills into the schools, but at the elementary level. And it's not so much the raw, I'm going to write this thing line by line, but more implementing the logic skills within those students, to say, okay, if I do this, turn left, then turn right, then up, then down, then turn green and left and right again, this is going to be the end result. So there are lots of tools out there that provide those interfaces, and a lot of, I'm not a programmer myself, but from what I've seen, there are a lot of tools like that that are used in that industry today, where, so it's not the line-by-line script writing anymore.
It, it struck me, someone dug a hole in my yard, dug a basement, and the width and depth is precise, and they were using, you know, laser lights and such, and the, the owner of the business commented that one of his next purchases would be a GPS-driven backhoe. And you could configure it to dig the hole exactly where it was supposed to be. And that's the kind of thing I'm thinking about, is that there are so many powerful devices, but it's a tricky deal to operate them these days, and right down to a lot of things even on phones, and, you know, they bring your own device to set up interfaces and file storage principles and things like that. Just me, I would think those are, those are technical skills that would apply to the devices they use.
Thank you. Anyone else? Do we, um, do we have a tech committee, a technology committee? I know we did at one time.
We're going to be reforming it this year.
Okay, and is that where the ideas are going to come from, like what you were describing, and I, you probably did give it a name, but the...
Oh, the forums.
The whiteboard, um, smart board, you know, new process where all the kids could do. Where, where does this all come from? I mean, all these many things you're doing, are you hearing it from classroom teachers, or, you know, whole...
It's a mix. I mean, some of it is my job, right, to, to find value propositions and, and opportunities. On the flip side, we, we have the tech coaches, we have other trailblazers in the district, and when needed, we have committees as well. That's actually part of why we've got that new help desk system, right? Because then that, this opens it up for everybody. Every employee in the district, if they see something, can post it on there and vote for each other's ideas, and the more votes, the more we're going to take notice and, and look.
Okay. Yeah, I was just wondering, you know, I'll echo Mr. Meyer, I think we are uniquely fortunate to have you in the role that you're in, in our district.
Thank you.
You're proactive and responsive, and, and Mr. Meyer knows this better, how very competent you are with, with everything that you're doing with technology, so we appreciate it, and we appreciate Dr. Ernold hijacking you from your consulting job to be an employee here. Okay, that was all I have. Anybody else? Okay. Is there any community comment on either the Education Foundation report, or the Technology Teaching Learning Report? Okay. Seeing none, is there any public comment on non-agenda items? Anything that did not appear on tonight's agenda? Okay. Seeing none, then, following the regular meeting, the school board will reconvene into executive session in Conference Room A to discuss a superintendent's evaluation. Statutory exemption to Wisconsin's open meetings law is contained in Section 1985.1C. May I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Meyer.
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Casey. Mrs. Glantik? Mr. Button?
Yes.
Mrs. Casey?
Yes.
Mrs. Feath?
Yes.
Mr. Croner?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Mielefeld?
Yes.
Mrs. Randall?